Trivia in five minutes while we go through the closed session. Who's ready, of course, Mark? We're gonna go through some trivia here in a little bit. I'm with Wayesville Crocker. Headquarters here in City Hall. For those that don't know, in the agenda, they have a session for closed session at the beginning of the council meeting. So rather than going there and set up and close and come back out here, I'll sit out here. So for those who don't know me, I'm Doug Carter, your host at Pulaski Talks. And we'll get started here in about 5:30 sharp. We've got some Pulaski County trivia. You can type your messages in the chat. It's the only way we can do it. Otherwise we'd get kind of ramble-umsious. So behind me is Main Street of Crocker. And the entryway to the Crocker City Hall. And hopefully you can see me fine. Sorry about the glare. Yeah, I polished it this morning. Should've put some powder on it. So it's 5:22 now. So you're chiming in from far and abroad. This is the monthly, I think it is, Crocker City Hall, City Council Meeting. Which is right behind me, or right in front of me, behind you, maybe behind those chambers. If I can zoom in, oh, look at their secret chambers, that cave. Fancy camera. Come in. Oop, that's not me. My house. Let's just get anyone on camera.
Bring the ball screen.
It's locked. But you're live. Everybody's seen you when you walk by. Of course, the camera kind of died when you walked by. I've heard that. I think I heard what I heard. My camera has a tendency to go off. Be a second, Lawrie. There we go. It's like Representative Hughes here. Don Mayhew's here tonight. I didn't see him on the agenda. But maybe he'll have something to say tonight. He is running for State Senate, I believe, against Bill Hardaway. Always get those confused. Not guilty?
Absolutely not. I had Bayou group. I was somewhere else.
Oh, that's true. The plain trivia at 5:30 while we're going closed session. Hey Sheriff.
How are you, Doug?
Good. Say hi to the crowd. Sheriff's here tonight giving a report. Talking to the live audience. The weather is supposed to be bad Saturday, but I've seen some weather coming in.
I'm sorry?
Some weather coming in Saturday.
That's what I've seen. I don't know. I'll wait till Saturday gets here.
We'll find out when it gets here, one way or the other. We'll. But the rock's wet. It's raining.
Rock's moving. Yeah, it's windy.
It's windy. Very windy. I don't know. How big's your rock? My one's pretty big. So it's pretty good wind. You look senior, soon as it came up.
I hope it's not bad because Saturday's when they got to Dunk Street.
Yeah.
But at the same time, guess could be a disaster. You gotta back up.
Looks like they're getting set up in the, they're getting set up in their. All right, 5:30, we're starting trivia, so be ready. 5:30. Three minutes. I got 50 questions. History about Pulaski County. Could be random trivia. Could win a million dollars. Maybe yes or no. Maybe A, B, or C. Just guess A, B. See what the crowd gets. We're going to trivia until they have open session. Closed sessions, they start out with closed session. That's what we're sitting out here in the waiting room of Crocker, City Hall. We're not punished. We're not in purgatory yet. We're gonna start off real easy. Whoever's out there, you gotta type in your answers. It should be Facebook or multi-screen. First question. What Missouri County was Pulaski County carved from in 1833? We'll give you 30 seconds. Go. 30 seconds. Who gets it first? It's a guess. See if anybody gets it. You got YouTube, and we've got YouTube audience and Facebook guys. What county was Pulaski County carved from in 1833? Missouri County, of course. 30 seconds. That's enough time to Google it. Anybody? The answer's Crawford County. Nobody got it. I wish I had my, if I was in my studio, I'd have my little man. Crawford County's answer. Crawford County. We were carved out of Crawford County. In 1833. There's a bigger, you should get this one. You're American. Pulaski County, which was part of which larger land acquisition? Amen. He got it. Louisiana Purchase. Ding 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 ding. Louisiana Purchase. And he goes, is that Thomas Jefferson, wasn't it? Yeah, that was Thomas. Wasn't it? Yeah. Yeah. Anybody? Well, there, we're gonna use that bell. I'm gonna say I got that right. Next question, number eight. What river runs to Waynesville and St. Robert? Anybody? We're waiting, we're, they're going closed session for the first 20, 30 minutes here in Crocker, so we'll have trivia, and that's what we're doing. What river runs through Waynesville and St. Robert in Pulaski County? This is under the topic of geography and location. We're doing some trivia here, Pulaski County trivia. What river runs through Waynesville and St. Robert in Pulaski County? 20 seconds. You gotta type in your answers in your comments. Got three viewers. Come on now. 15 seconds. I need a timer. Where's my timer? The Ruby New Creek. It's not really a river. Sorry, but it says the Ruby New Creek as the answer. All right. Cities and towns. Which Pulaski County city is known for its large military population? This is internet questions, not my questions. The question is again, which Pulaski County city is known for its large military population? 30 seconds. Very good. Stacy Nash, you got the Ruby Doo. I'll give it to you. I can't take it because I'm the host. Even though they gave me my clothes, I can't answer the questions. Going back to the question, which Pulaski County city is known for its large military population? 15 seconds. We're going quick on this one. 10 seconds. Nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. Stacy, I know you got this one. St. Robert. We're gonna say St. Robert. I'm gonna give it to Stacy Nash because I think she already got it anyway. Good job, Stacy. Now, we know this one. This just happened not too long ago. We're going back to the same topic, cities and towns. Which town in Pulaski County is famous for its Cal Days Festival? Again, we're gonna give 30 seconds. Which town in Pulaski County is famous for its Cal Days Festival? 20 seconds. Should be, anybody that lives here or been here knows this one. 20 seconds. We're gonna say it again. Which town in Pulaski County is famous for its Cal Days Festival? Stacy, you may be 100%. You put the initials in there, two words. You know, no, it's one name. Starts with, I'm not even gonna, I'm gonna throw no hints out here. 10 seconds. Dixon, good. Stacy Nash, you're three for three. Where's my, I wish I had some kind of a bell. Where's the bell when you need one? Oh, Stacy Nash, you're killing me. I wish I had some awards. All right, we're doing great. Uh, okay. Route 66 and tourism. Now, I was at the, I was at the, you look, I think I posted a picture last night on the Pulaski Talks. Neon Park is pretty impressive once you get the lights turned on. Here we go. Speaking of tourism, Pulaski County is along which historic highway? Should be pretty quick. We're doing trivia.
I got kicked out. Man, I've been kicked out of better places than this.
Well, we're doing trivia, so we're going live on trivia while we're waiting, so. All right. Get my camera turned off. All right, here we go. You're going with the crowd, too. Tourism. Pulaski County is along which historic highway? Route 66, you got it. Stacy, you're slow. You gotta keep up, Stacy. You gotta keep up. All right. Here we go. Route, no, Devil's Devil Bridge is a historic structure on which route?
Old Route 66.
Route 66, same answer, same answer. Now, this is two. He's, oh, here's another one. Fort Leonard Wood was established in what year?
Which, there were two times. 1920, somewhere or another, and then 1933.
1940. Is what the internet gave me. Now, the internet, it's always right.
So it was a camp.
That's true.
It wasn't a fort, so maybe that's the distinction. 40 was when it.
Probably got established as a, okay, we're gonna give the internet the answer.
Yeah. They went. Because after all, if it ain't on the internet, it ain't true.
That's right. Good job, Stacy. We're giving you the answer because we can't make our minds up here. Stacy Nash is killing it. So we got four viewers. That's good. That's just on Facebook, so usually about 25 on YouTube. Now, who is the Fort Leonard Wood named after ago, internet? Our attendees here, who's?
General Leonard Wood.
General Leonard Wood. Dang it. We're killing it here. Natural Attractions. The Gascónade River is famous for being the longest river contained entirely in which state?
Missouri.
Missouri, I know.
And it's one of the very few that runs from south to north.
Exactly. Oh, my, listen, my camera went jacked up. Give me a second.
And Little Piney does. Big Piney did.
See if my camera catches the pink south somewhere. There we go. Where are you from? Los Angeles? Wow, you are out of place.
You are definitely a fish out of water here. No.
No?
No.
Government civics. This should be easy for you. Pulaski County is governed by a commission of how many members?
Three.
Three members.
That's right.
Can you name them, please? Not people, but what positions?
Eastern, Western, and Preside.
Thank you, sir. In what city is the Pulaski County Courthouse located?
Waynesville.
Thank you, sir. County Sheriff's Office is headquarters where?
In Waynesville.
Thank you, sir. And the Missouri Senate District includes Pulaski County, which one?
16.
Thank you, sir. 16th Senate District. That's enough civics. That's too exciting.
Well, wait a minute. Two House Districts.
Two House Districts.
121 and 124.
We just asked the Senate. The internet's right. Whatever. Stacy, you're killing it. I don't know you, Stacy Nash, but you got the answers for everything here. Wow, you're killing it. Education. Rick Crocker, Dixon, Lakewood, Richland, and Sweetburg all have what in common?
On the Frisco Railroad.
Each has its own school district. Two for two. We're gonna give that the same. What's the mascot of the Waynesville High School?
Fire.
Very good. Richland's high school mascot?
Bear.
You're on fire. Fun and lesser-known facts. Now, this could be dangerous. You can wave off.
Yeah.
Which outlaw is once rumored to hide in a cave near Waynesville?
Oh, that's Jesse James.
Jesse James. What unique museum near Fort Leonard Wood highlights military engineering?
The Engineers Museum.
The Engineer Museum. Engineering, of course. We're gonna go back. Ruby Doo Spring is recognized as a top spot in Missouri for what activity?
Fishing.
No.
No?
No.
Because you do a lot of fishing on there. Ruby Doo Spring.
Ruby Doo Spring is recognized as a top spot in Missouri.
We ain't allowed to swim there anymore. Um, ain't that. Oh, cave diving.
There you go. Scuba, scuba and diving.
Cave diving, yes. Scuba diving in a cave.
I was waiting, I was waiting for you, Stacy. Krista, why weren't you there? I was, you're new, but you gotta keep up. Come on now. You can do better.
And I think there's been kind of like two, two or three divers had to be rescued.
Right. It gives me shivers just thinking about getting in those tight spots. Pulaski County is part of what Missouri geographical plateau?
The Ozark Plateau.
Yes, sir. Hunters in Pulaski County often pursue which two common game animals?
White-tailed deer.
Yes.
And squirrels.
Turkey. Turkey.
That is good. That's one awesome. I've got a couple of them grazed in my backyard, so. And turkeys, too, so, yeah.
But you got your audience. Well, you wanna give us an update?
Uh, what do we want to update on?
What is going on in your world is represented in the great.
Well, so we began forming bills that started October 1st. So what that is, is that we can do research and start drafting of bills that we will file next session. So after we go through that period of time, then we can prefile on December the 1st. Uh, so any bill that we have gotten ready to go, when we prefile it, that just puts it in the queue to be looked at by everyone, um, which typically advances the schedule on it a little bit. Uh, then the speaker can choose, more easily choose between those bills for the ones that he wants to send to committee first.
Let me back up a little bit. Let's, once you introduce yourself to our new members of our audience.
Oh, I'm State Representative Don Mayhew, District 124. That includes most of Miller County and two-thirds of Pulaski County.
Thank you, sir. And how many residents do we have, or how many residents voters do you cover?
So the, the population has to be the same in every House District, and that's 37,000, about 37,500 people.
Okay.
And that district, so that everybody gets a geographical reference, runs generally, you would call it Eldon area down to Lakewood.
Okay. And elections coming up for State Senate between you and Mr. Hardwick?
Uh, me and Mr. Hardwick and two other people also. Correct. So four totals so far in the race. Uh, that, uh, but that gives the folks plenty of opportunity to either get in the race or not.
Sighing days.
So Los Angeles, what part?
The area between LA and Long Beach.
Ooh.
Coast to Bay area, South by San Monica. That's where I tell you, I'm around the San Monica area on occasion. San Monica, Pier, Redondo, Pier, Manhattan, Pier, some of those have been on all of them.
Yeah.
Swam for one day. Swam for like a fortnight.
Yeah.
I used to be in a lot better shape.
So I can, so we went out there a few years back, took my mom and dad out to my uncle's funeral. So, um, on Wednesday, we didn't have anything to do, so I took them up to Malibu. Then we came along, back along the Pacific Coast Highway.
Right.
So we made the turn and came up the hill and onto the interstate from the Pacific Coast Highway. And it was five lanes both directions, parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
Right? And, uh, and so it's like 7:30 at night. And it was like, what in the world is going on, right? Football game or something going on? So we were staying in Burbank, California. So it took us from 7:30 until 11:30 to drive 17 miles from, from where the Pacific Coast Highway heads to the interstate. Uh, and Burbank, right? And so all the way to Burbank. And so I asked my cousin the next day, I said, what was going on down in LA last night? I said, you know, freaking parking lot on the interstate. He goes, nothing. He says, this way it is all the time. He had friends who spent eight hours a day in traffic. Eight hours a day.
Going back and forth to work.
Going back and forth to work.
Yeah.
Who in their right mind would do that? There's no amount of money that you could pay me to make that worth it.
I didn't start driving until I got married. I got married two years after. I left California. I rode, I rode a 10-speed bicycle everywhere I went.
Yeah.
It was just faster more. It made more sense.
Yeah. Well, what you learn is, um, to get around LA, you don't get to the interstate.
You don't, you don't do that.
Yeah.
And you try to, well, actually, I have a sister who still lives in Big Bird. She says, if you can avoid driving anywhere, dog, with like Uber, DoorDash, you can order from Walmart and stuff like that. She says, if you can do that, do that.
Yeah.
She said, absolutely ridiculous. I've got a friend that still lives. Uh, he works for TSA out in LAX, and he, uh.
A little bit of a sorry for him.
Oh, right now, yeah, he's, I mean, he's hurt right now.
Yeah.
Uh, especially when he's got a little boy that's got medical issues and stuff like that.
Well, I was just talking about the job, just playing them straight up the job. You know, we flew into Burbank, and anybody who's going to Los Angeles, you definitely don't want to fly into LA.
No, you go to Burbank, you go to John Wayne, just put your cap on.
Yeah. Uh, it is a whole lot easier to get in and out of it. Like, you know, you don't go near the issues either, but, and then there's not as, there are no long security lines at Burbank. You know, you're in, on your plane at no time at all. Um, but yeah, that was, that was, I can't imagine people living like that.
When I grew up out there, and I say grew up, because when I went to Army in 81, I pretty much didn't go back to California at all. When I grew up out there, it was totally different mentality than it is now. Now, it's all the, the, well, the cost of living out there is stupid. And it wasn't like that. I mean, I can, I can remember the gas lines in the 70s, and, you know, you can only get gas on even days. If the last number on your plate is even. I didn't remember all of that stuff, but it's, it's kind of, LA is too much like New York.
Yeah.
Just reminding you, buddy, we're just waiting for closed session to open up, and we'll get back to business.
So we, uh, when we were there, um, you know, gas back there was like $2.20 a gallon. It was $7 a gallon in, in.
We got questions for Mr. Mayhew.
And so, um, you know, we drove around a lot. And so the, from Burbank, we could take surface streets, get underneath the interstate, and we'd go through the Hollywood Hills, and they'd come up and they'd end up in Hollywood fairly easily.
Right.
Now, it was, uh, and you don't have to be there very long before you figure out the interstate's not the way to go.
No.
So as it turns out, I was, uh, we were having a, a meeting over at Fort Leonard Wood. We were talking to military dependents.
Good for you.
I'm a meeting about.
While we wait.
Not have a very good job.
Questions from time to time.
$2 an hour.
Okay, let's see. Yep, I don't have, damn, so mine's a deer net.
Take it with, um, a rodeo. We have a tentative, um, contract with them for Friday and Saturday night. It's a two-day. Um, they will provide everything. Horses, all the equipment.
Oh, boy.
Everything. Um, I got with them about redoing some of, or actually adding in chutes and stuff. Um, he was, he's been talking to Tori about setting up chutes at the far end, two and two, with a middle gate. Um, and then also adding a paddle for, um, roping off to the side. Um, so he's been looking with her on how to set that up and everything like that. Or to come in, if we, if he has to bring their schnooks in, he goes to a contractor. If that contractor has to bring his chutes and everything in, I believe it was $3,600 for it. If we have everything set up, it's $1,600.
What do you think we can have?
We, Tori's gonna have, she's gonna start doing everything. Um, to set the chute stuff and everything, rebuild that whole, whole end back there and stuff like that with holding pens and everything like that.
When are we looking?
Um, well, we're doing it for railroad days. This will be the railroad days, um, that we discussed, um, for next year for railroad days. This, this is the big.
Friday and Saturday rodeo.
This will be a Friday and Saturday. Now, the only thing that we did discuss, no fireworks, even up here in town. The whole thing, for the whole thing, because they do have young riders coming in with horses, and then the cattle, they don't want them to get spooked. And we had even said about having maybe, um, having them up here, but with the wild boos, they don't want to spook the horses because it is rough stock. Um, so that would be the only thing that we would have to discuss, and Tori has an idea for that also. So, um, but like I said, it is tentative, so I guess I get, need to get with you on some different things that we need to discuss with it.
Yeah, if I need, if I need to come to a saddle, we'd let you know, and I'll be happy to come.
He actually came down to the saddle club the last one.
Oh, okay.
So.
When is your next meeting?
It is actually this Thursday.
This Thursday.
But we'll probably, um, he won't be there. I'll give him a call. I'll get with you on a couple of the different things.
Okay.
On it and stuff before I get back with him.
Okay.
Um, it's just little things, little details that need to be cleared up.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Uh, but that is what we are looking at right now, um, and he is actually also getting with his contractor to. to um, check to see if his contractor has cattle or tank and stuff like that also. Um, and I do have another contact for cattle for that also. So we may be hopefully getting some stuff in um, starting spring.
Yeah.
And stuff. So there's a couple of things we have to do um, around the arena. Um, and stuff like that. Uh, Kirk, their request also. Um, and he will have the sheep come in for the kids. Um, I believe they even have, I think they can bring the Peewee bulls in, I think he said. Um, but they would have bulls and then they would have the horses also and stuff. So, and then barrel racing and everything, it's the whole big thing. All that stuff, so.
Sounds good.
I will get more details, but I do need to get with you on a couple of dead set ones.
Thank you, absolutely.
All right.
Oh, and then the um, saddle club meeting will be Thursday this week at six o'clock down at the park.
You're gonna go to that?
Yeah, if you want me to go to that one, or do you wanna?
Wait till.
Get with you on it and stuff. Um, Tori's on a four-day work. Okay, she's got more information.
Okay.
And stuff that needs to be done by Red Bull next month.
Yeah, okay, that's fine. We'll have.
Okay. But like I said, a tentative one, so um, we'll go from there and see what we can work out.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Don, we might as well do you right here too.
All right. Thank you, Herr Patton and Councilman for giving me a few minutes to update you on last session. Um, the most notable thing is, you'll drop down to the hand out there, was House Bill one ninety-nine. And what that does is allow towns like Crocker, Richland, and Dixon to be able to appoint people from outside the city limits to serve on boards and commissions. And the reason why that was necessary is because a lot of times, um, you've probably experienced this. Um, you have a planning and zoning board that can't meet because it never established a court. And unfortunately, folks will, you know, decide to serve and then find out that there's a little bit more time commitment than they thought there was. But however, there were folks in the area, and this specifically came up over in Richland with regard to a utility.
Utility.
They could never get formed, and so a lot of the things that they needed to decide on, they'd never get done because you couldn't establish court. However, there were folks, business owners, uh, landowners that lived outside the city limits that were more than willing to serve on the board, but the mayor couldn't put them on. And so um, I filed this bill five years in a row. And um, couldn't get much interest on the senate side to get it done, even though it seemed like a no-brainer. And uh, and a lot of our communities were, were uh, deeply bad. So this last year, we finally got it done on House Bill one ninety-nine. Uh, there were a couple of other ones that were noteworthy for municipalities that I had filed, and they got really close. They were on a senate bill, ready to be TAFP, that's truly agreed to and finally passed. And for some reason, and that, which means that all they had to do was pick it up and vote to TAFP it, and then it would have become law. And, or would have went to the governor's desk for signature. And uh, for whatever reason, they decided that they wouldn't pick up a bill that had already been passed by both chambers, and all they had to do was vote on the TAFP. Well, what that, what that included was a um, a fairly simple thing, but it turns out it can be extremely expensive. And uh, one of them was the House Bill eight oh-two, which would require that the city clerk only have to keep one hard copy of the um, general ordinance book available for public comment as long as you had it posted online. So the current statute required you to have at least three. So every time the ordinance book changed, it had to be taken apart, the new ordinance is put in in the proper place, and all the cross-references and everything else. Pretty expensive and timely enterprise. And so what this bill would do is reduce some of that impact down to only having to do that one time with one ordinance book. If you had it available online. We'll get that passed this year. Uh, there's more than one member who's interested in making sure that this gets passed. Um, and as simple as it is, it does have a big impact, especially in small communities. Um, annual budgets for political subdivisions. As strange as it may sound, there was at least a couple of political subdivisions in our state that decided that the only time council members could see the budget was on the night they were voting on it. And uh, and it, and one of them was the school board too, by the way, which I found unbelievable. So I got in touch with the attorney general and I said, can this be done legally? And they said, well, yeah, technically, there's no law that would prevent it. And I said, but it's, it would be, we all assume that's standard operating procedure. So this bill uh, would require that the members of the city council or school board be apprised of and delivered a copy of the budget at least one week ahead of voting on it. Well, you would think that we wouldn't have to do such a thing.
You would think that committee wouldn't vote on a budget. They didn't get the review.
Yeah, yeah. Absolutely. And so uh, so there's, it makes perfect sense. Once again, it got on there with, nobody objected to it. I mean, there's Missouri Municipal League, I would have loved for them to come testify in favor, they didn't. They took a stance that we're not gonna object to it, and so, uh, therefore, but, but I wish that Missouri Municipal League would spend a little more time testifying on bills that affect our communities that are other than St. Louis and Kansas City. Well, uh, because MML represents you guys too.
They represent every municipality, but focus on the medium, the large ones.
Well, and, and even the mediums get um, get the bums rushed when it comes to that. But boy, by golly, if there's something that affects Kansas City or St. Louis, they're there right on top of it. And uh, there's honestly, there are more communities, there's more mayors in small towns than there are big towns. And I would remind everyone of that fact. Uh, what is this statistic? I'm gonna get it wrong, but um, the um, majority, two-thirds of the school districts in the state are rural communities, are rural districts. And so how come they don't have more power over things like the foundation formula? Right? So uh, so I would encourage everyone to um, make their voices known at the Capitol. And including and to the point of coming up and testifying on bills. Um, the other thing of note that we did pass was to allow uh, cities and counties to use um, uh, use design build as an option for contracting. So now that is available to you also. Now, I would caution you, um, since I am in that business, that a design build works great for vertical structures. So buildings and what have you. It's not very good for horizontal construction. That would be sewer lines and city streets and things like that. And because for a building, a lot of the variables are known. You know, we, you know, about the only concern you've got is the supportive foundation, you know, the soil underneath that, and that can be eliminated with testing. Everything else with a building construction is pretty much a known quantity. When you get into horizontal construction, utility construction, there's a lot of unknowns, as you know, uh, mayor. And uh, so, but it is an option that is available. I uh, the reason I discourage it on a lot of other things like that is it's because the opportunity um, for you not having a representative of your interest on the job. Uh, me as an engineer, I am the owner's representative there. I don't have a vested interest in contractor making money. Now, it is in everyone's best interest to make sure that everyone is well-paid, but if I'm working for the contractor, then who's working for the city?
Yeah.
So, well, with that, that's all the update I had. Uh, we're starting uh, right now, our session has basically started because we can start uh, forming the bills that, that we are going to file. And we call that drafting. So we're starting to draft bills for next session. December first is pre-filing, so all of these bills that we're drafting now, we can pre-file starting December the first. Pre-filing, um, it doesn't necessarily give you a leg up, but it, it notifies leadership and your fellow members of what's coming their way so they can get a, a look at it ahead of time. And so it does help in that regard. Uh, we can file a bill right up until um, a couple of weeks before spring break. However, a bill that gets filed then has very little chance of going anywhere. It would have to be a leadership priority in order to do that. So with that, I'll take any questions from the council.
Yeah, any? Uh, weapon out.
I, I just wanna make sure. Uh, the, the Missouri law, it's a RMSO one oh-six dot two seventy-three, removal of the chief law enforcement officer.
Removal of the chief law enforcement officer.
And if you look at that, that law is designed for large metropolitan areas who have endless dollars in their coffers. It kills small communities like ours. Is there anybody looking at revamping that law at all?
So there was a couple of folks that had ran into a similar kind of problem. And um, and so I don't know what your specific situation is, but there um, we discovered that we had created a cause of action. And um, so while the lawyers love that idea, the taxpayers typically don't. And so while there probably does need to be some protections for those law enforcement officers who are forced to make difficult decisions, um, that bill might not have covered everything it needed to cover for the situations that can occur that might be outside of the normal process.
It's very ambiguous.
Very ambiguous. That's a better way of saying it, very much. Um, and so there was a couple of folks that were working on a bill. It didn't get out of committee last year. But I, what I'll do is I'll check and see the progress of that and see if anybody's gonna tackle that this year. But it is on the radar screen, but probably needs a little bit of a push. And so I think that providing examples of where it hasn't worked very well would be very beneficial. So if you have um, examples without getting into, uh, I know it's difficult, but getting into the personalities and the people's names, but in a generic sense, describe what you think that the problems with the law are and what, some suggestions on how they could, how it can be improved.
Gotcha.
So that would be my recommendation.
Send an email to you?
Send an email to me.
Okay.
Everybody got my email address? It's don.may@houscmo.gov.
Can you say that any faster?
D O N dot M A Y A T W at H O U S C dot M O dot G O E. And anyone is encouraged to send me an email. Uh, the uh, the canned emails probably don't have too much of an effect. Uh, you usually get a canned response for that one, but if you write me an email, we will address it, address your problem. Um, the one last recommendation I'll make to you is the, the government doesn't work unless you're involved. And um, you know, we uh, are very aware of the troubles we had with um, some vetoes in the budget. Um, and um, hon- honestly, small communities are often overlooked and uh, there's uh, but we can scream as loud as we want, but until that can be translated into voters, then those people who make those decisions above me um, probably don't pay much attention, unfortunately, because they know you're not gonna show up. And um, and that's what they rely on. So my encouragement is, like we talked about earlier on some of these other issues, we need you guys to come up and testify. Um, I'm a committee chair and have been now for six years in different committees, but I get sick and tired of the only people who come and show up to testify on a bill are lobbyists.
Is that my invite only, Don?
No, it is not. It is open to, every hearing is a public hearing, and you are more than welcome to attend on any subject. It doesn't have to be a municipality. Uh, citizens of the state of Missouri are encouraged. Uh, like I said, I already know what the lobbyists want. I want to reach into my pocket. But the uh, the folks need to be at the way in on those issues. Now, the other thing that's an available option to everyone, and I want everyone to know this, is that you can testify online. So the day of the committee hearing, you can testify all the way up until midnight that night. You could submit written testimony online. Um, it's not very daunting. It's actually pretty simple, the process. Now, you gotta do it once or twice. But I would encourage you to do that. All of our committee hearings, all of our floor sessions are all live-streamed. So you can watch a budget hearings, you can watch hearings on different bills, live-stream that. So from the comfort of your home, instead of watching YouTube videos on how to crochet upset socks, that same amount of time you could uh, have watched a committee hearing. Now, I will tell you, um, it's not exciting TV. Well, except if it's one of my committees. I, I usually try to keep the, the people's interest, but it's very important that, that the people do participate at that level. That's provided a service to the public, and they should take advantage of it.
Where do you find agendas for that? What's that, agendas for these committee meetings?
Okay.
Like on the state of Missouri's website or something?
Um, so there, there really won't be an agenda. We notice up for committee hearing, like I will notice up for committee hearings a week ahead of time. But there is nothing to keep someone from noticing for a committee hearing on a particular bill twenty-four hours in advance. So it's twenty-four hours and a legislative day, which often the way you do that is you make the legislative day also the twenty-four hour period. So a lot of times, I don't even know my bills getting heard in the committee until the day before. And so I can make phone calls, but then folks will tell me, I can't get up there, I got a real job.
Do you email them to her for?
No, absolutely. For the, for these bills right here, absolutely. I will be sending that out to all the communities in my area to give you the opportunity. Now, most of these, um, they, these won't be the bills that get crammed into that, that twenty-four hour notice thing because they're not controversial. Typically, what happens is you'll see controversial bills that are, you know, at the last minute. Or it is something that gets overlooked, like a bill gets referred to committee, and it, and it would actually fit in the committee hearing for the other bills that are being heard. So sometimes that happens. I can't promise that I can get more than a day's notice, but we can do that every chance we get, and I don't have a problem doing that at all. So.
I'd like to know, yes.
Yeah. And uh, so you would uh, change concerns of other communities uh, that are our size.
So you said you sat on several, you're chairman of several committees?
Have been chairman for several. Uh, this year, I'm chairman of, of um, corrections of public institutions. So that covers a wide swath.
Mm-hmm.
It's not just corrections. Uh, vice chair of two other committees, or actually three now. And I'm a member of uh, last count, eleven committees of one sort or another. And um, the um, the, the speaker has got a lot of confidence in me, and I appreciate his, his confidence. And uh, I try to not let him down. Uh, but um, I have a, I have a reputation for asking the hard questions. And uh, I think that's our job.
Yeah.
That's oversight is an extremely important part, especially when you're talking about a fifty-three billion dollar budget. Uh, to get, put that in a little perspective for you, the first budget I voted on in the House of Representatives, that was only seven years ago, was twenty-nine and a half billion dollars. So this last one we voted on was fifty-three billion dollars. Okay, you know, nearly double.
Wow.
And uh, can you honestly tell me that you're getting twice the government that you got seven years ago? Well, I would disagree. Now, a lot of folks will say that, well, that's a lot of federal spending. Certainly, there's some federal spending in there. But three years ago, we had six and a half billion dollars in reserve. And now, that after the end of the fiscal year, we had six hundred million dollars left over at the end of the fiscal year. Now, we made some pretty.
We need one.
Yeah.
One.
That's it. I know, right? And uh, so uh, we made some pretty full of buying decisions in the legislature. You know, everybody got a, an electric dog polisher and a battery powered charger. And some other things that we probably could live without, easily enough. And um, and I am not happy at all. Um, and I did whatever I could to try to circumvent some of that, but um, uh, to give you a little bit of idea on the budget process, I know this isn't what you asked for, but I do wanna let you know how these things work. Is when the governor delivered the um, fifty-three billion dollar budget, uh, his request. So what, what it is, is that we file the budget bills. But the governor thinks recommendation, we call that the GovRec, his recommendation for the budget for every department in the state of Missouri. Well, we then start looking at that budget and seeing what we can do to trim it, increase it, the, the different things. Because it is actually, it's. Because it is actually, it's our bills. It's the House Representative's bill. Well, then we pass that out and it goes over to the Senate for them to do whatever it is they do for it. And then once they pass it, they send it back to us to T A M P to finally pass it. Okay, so the normal process for that is, is that we would go through the budget, we hand it off to them. And then usually my first couple of years, we got the budget back with about two weeks left. That did was give us the opportunity to have a conference committee with the Senate on our disagreements in the budget. So now for the last three years, one year we didn't conference at all. So we were, we basically had to accept whatever the Senate sent us. One year, we, we got a limited number of conference, but not on the entire budget. Then this last year, they sent it back to us with three days left to go. With the idea that we wouldn't have the opportunity to conference. And so our budget chair begged, pleaded with the budget chair on the Senate side, had a conference committee. And so they finally reluctantly agreed to it after we threatened to not pass budget. And so then there was a marathon conference session where it is rapid fire. You know, this, that, you know, I mean, it's, it looked like the pictures you see of the stock market. Right? Where the commodities board, I should say, in Chicago, where there's all this activity going on and nobody can keep track of any of it. That's not the way to do a $53 billion budget. And that's certainly not the way we should have done it here. And so as a result, whenever we did our budget, we took 53 billion and took up to 49 billion. And we did not eliminate one single job and we did not cut one single program. We simply cut the fluff out. That's all we did. Okay, so as it turns out, there's a constituency for that flaw. And unfortunately, and apparently the Senate is very concerned about that constituency. Because they took that $49 billion budget, like I said, not one person lost their job, not one program was cut. And they put all the money right back in. Well, I don't know about you, but $4 billion is a lot of money to me. And we could have served the public a lot better than we did last year on the budget process. That is the most important thing we do, is paying our bills, but also being good stewards of the taxpayers' money. And I don't feel like that we've done that very well. And so hopefully going into the future, there's been a change on that side as far as who their budget chair is. So I'm cautiously optimistic that we're finally going to take a serious look at this budget. Because this next year is going to be pretty lean. Where that all kind of starts is what's called the CRE. What CRE is a consensus revenue estimate. That's where the budget chairs on both chambers. And the governor get together and decide on what the growth rate is going to be for the state of Missouri for the next year. And so that's what our whole budget is based on. That is our total revenue that we're going to apply to our expenses. And I complained that two years ago that our CRE was way too high. And because everything in the economy was predicting a slowdown. We were either going to see flatlining on sales tax revenue or we're going to see a drop in it. So thank God that we just saw a flatline. We didn't see a downturn. So there was a leveling off. So I was an advocate of something less than 1.83 for, for a CRE. And in my opinion, we should have been more like a 1.23 or somewhere in that area. But you can imagine that reduces the amount of money left over to be Santa Claus. And unfortunately, we put our priority on being Santa Claus. And so this last cycle, it's exactly what happened. That at the end of the fiscal year, we were supposed to have 1.5 billion dollars left on bottom line. We had 600 million left on bottom line. So now the governor's going through and doing withholds. So at least the good news, bad news of that story is had, had it survived the budget process and the governor not vetoed. The hundred thousand dollars we got here for the water line probably would have been a withhold. Because that low hanging fruit, and that's what the governor's doing. And all these withhold, he's just trying to grab the low hanging fruit to make sure that we can pay the bills that we need to pay. We're going to try it again. We're also going to try some different routes. Perhaps for some grant funding to help out on our water line issue. That's going to be a few months away and obviously the need is great right now. And so I would encourage you to pursue every avenue possible.
The way on.
And yes. Yeah, well, I, I hear you. I don't know how to make them come.
You wouldn't believe the amount of solicitation that I have with grocery stores all over the state of Missouri.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, let's get one of them. Yeah. Now that is, I will tell you that the constituents are concerned about that. And that is, that comes up frequently about the grocery store. So, you know, any, any help I can do, and I don't know what I can do, but I will absolutely. I take that back. Yesterday I was down in Wright County and Shetler's is a local business person down there. That has the grocery stores in that kind of area. Well, they also have an event center where, where the Wright County folks met to talk to some of us running for another job. And so I knew that the lady there that was running it was associated with Shetler's Grocery. So I pitched Crocker to her. I said, you know, would you be interested? Well, she didn't say no. So that's at least one good sign.
Oh, which didn't say no either.
I think we can have enough of those kind of conversations moving in the future.
Nightclub.
Nightclub. That's what we need.
Yeah, that's exactly what we need. I thought you were going to say, I didn't say no, but.
Well, how wait, man? Richard?
So any other questions?
You got anything else for her?
Well, thank you very much.
If anybody got anything for her, now's the time to ask. Boy, they're awful quiet. You still on the DNR committee? You still in the DNR committee?
Uh, no, I'm not on confirmation. I'm on joint committee for transportation, however, and Melba really loves that.
You love that, Brian?
I'm glad to have you.
He's got a lot of stuff done for my.
Well, folks, definitely are fans of mine. It's the upper echelon above the second floor at the head she had it for. Probably have a few more issuers. I was there, Ben. All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. It's an opportunity and you know how to get older.
Yep. Got you on speed dial. All right, consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the agenda as written. Second.
Seth, she has changed her name or something on one of them?
I do. I need to amend it because my copy and paste skill wasn't the greatest. From the meeting on August. September 9th on the last page. No, hang on a damn second.
I got.
So it ain't right.
You pick her own page because I'm not seeing them.
I'm not seeing.
The one that I realized.
It's on this one right here.
You do. You do, right? It's on September 24th.
Yeah. Public area.
Yeah, right here.
Don't want his hand.
Nope. That's the second page. Here it is.
Linda, what'd you do with it?
I don't have it. I don't have it either.
It's right here. Right here. See it?
Oh my gosh.
Now, yeah, that's bad.
All right, then I do need a motion to approve the agenda with the correction.
I don't like the rest of them.
I don't know about that name.
Need a motion. Second.
Yeah.
On favor? All right.
Thanks, guys.
I need a motion to approve the minutes. Second.
Yeah, I'll second it.
On favor?
Hi.
Need a motion to approve the bills. Is there anything out of the ordinary?
Well, that 941 assessment in there is from the first quarter of 2023. I had to go back and refile that because it wasn't filed correctly. The other one is being billed for what we used for that contract for 911.
Yeah, it says it was programmed.
Programmed, yes.
Okay, I had a motion. I need a second.
Second.
All in favor? All right, we're going to go to reports. And I'm first up here. All right. Several things Ozark applicators did come and clean the tower at Herald Street. They did find an issue. There was some sediment in it. Wasn't too bad. So we got it all cleaned out. This, they, we let it settle. We were pouring in it. So, and actually they turned it in today. So, but the issue was at the top of the stem, got a hole in it. They patched it right now, but it's going to have to be welded. So that's, that's a different issue than the clean out. So, and what I'm going to.
Have to be patched from the inside or the outside?
Yeah, be patched from the inside. So, and they did it. They patched it and they said it'll hold. It's not leaking, but we would have to get it fixed. So, and if you get binoculars and look at it, it's right where the bowl comes down and right where the stem is, you'll, you'll see.
It's got a crack in it?
Yeah, the seams crack.
Well, I live right by and I guess.
You're going to end up like.
The water is not running out, you know, it's not flowing out of it or anything. It's coming down the stem. And if I look at it the other day too, if, if you get binoculars or you have good set of eyes, better than mine. You'll see a little white streak down. That white streak is the quarry on the page. So. So they did patch it right now. It's going to have to be fixed. That is where I come up with my next deal. I did get a, a bid for the school tower. To be painted and fixed. There are several things on it we got to fix. DNR has come up with some new regulations. Antenna, there's antennas up there. This one doesn't have an antenna anymore. The, it's a school, I believe it's a school antenna.
Isn't some of that still from Cable America?
And it could be, it could be. But they got the coax's ran down the ladder. That's all got to be taken off. And the way the antennas are mounted has to be mounted with a magnet mount. Can't be welded to the tank. So. It's for the rust. So anyway. If you want to look at this bid, this is from Ozark applicators. Is for, actually they're going to sandblast the inside of the tower of the school. Paint it and do the necessary requirements from DNR to it. It's under $200,000.
So that's strictly the inside of the tower?
Sandblasting the inside of the tower. They don't have to sandblast the outside. Because to me, the paint company has come up with new paint. And they can paint over the existing paint without.
So does that include the painting of the outside?
Yes. This is the bid for everything to that tower. White and blue. Yeah, you have a, they've got a lion's head logo they can put on it, this and that. So it's just.
We're going to have to take the bat though, that one, that line?
What?
Even though they're not ours?
Oh, the antenna, yeah. Our tower.
I called him and said.
Yeah. But look at that. And the reason I brought that up now is she just sent me that. She has made it with Ozark applicators. If we have to fix, which we are going to, let them get that thing fixed and going. Then while they're here, they can come over here. We don't have to pay for another setup fee or anything like that. They're already here. And they can get up here and all we have to do is drain it down, that's the bolt. So it doesn't have to be totaling it. And they'll get up there. Then repatch that and paint it. So epoxy, they call it, from the outside. So.
Is that something like spring works?
Uh, it is. It's spring. Cause I told her, I said, when could we get on their list? And she said it would be after school for that town.
Jim, this is removed from the handrail according to DNR's recommendations.
Recommendations.
So it's not a law.
It's, it's, that one, that one there is not the law, but the other ones that on the handrails. The ones on the ladders are required. It has to be done. It's safe.
And that they said.
Well, this.
So what they do on them, when we take them off, see they're bolted to the hand. Right. If you look at it, they're bolted to the handle. We take them off of that and they put the, what they call the magnet mounts. That goes on the tank. Then they'll just run it right down.
Is that stuff doing work?
I, well, the, the Cable America stuff doesn't.
No, that contract expired and they were supposed to get that stuff off of the towers. I don't think they did.
And if, if they, that could be the $10,000 that we, we could say, you come and get it and get it off there. But there is a, doesn't the school have a tower, antenna up there?
That I don't.
I don't know.
I think they do.
They probably do.
Yeah. So I think.
Just take it all down and say, throw in the dumpster.
Well, and that's what we could do and say, you know, we don't, if the school has an antenna up there, then we fix that antenna the way it should be done and dumped it. But get rid of the other. We just need to find out.
And I don't know that Splash doesn't have one up there too.
They never signed a contract with us.
Oh, they didn't?
Nope.
I thought your predecessor said that we had had a contract with them.
Not, not Splash. I never did sign Splash.
Used to be up there. The one, you know, my house.
I don't still have services on the property. I'm not having any problems with the service.
Cut and see who calls.
There you go. That's, that's exactly what we need to do.
But I did ask Megan with those Ozark applicators when we could get on the schedule. And she said, well, that tower, they'd like to do it. If they know all about it, they've done our towers for years. After school's out. That way there's no traffic up there. They can get in and get it done, which would be sometime in late May.
Well, they got summer school.
Yeah.
It'll take some months.
Early June.
But if they put off that circle drive, then summer school, it is what it is.
Well, and it, we blocked off around that tower. I mean, there wouldn't be. No traffic in and out of that circle drive. So that's something we'd have to just get with the school and say, look.
Oh, they're doing a one year warranty on it?
They'll do, yeah.
What's the last time it was paid?
That tower painted, oh God, long time ago. You guys.
Yeah.
Good dreaming.
Yeah, and they said that in the last inspection, that's when they found all of that and said it needed to be painted pretty bad. So.
Well.
So with this, with this, yeah, with this. We've got a contract. You were going to talk about it, Joe. I'll let you talk about it. But with that contract, the bug contract tomorrow, or not tomorrow, Thursday at 10 o'clock. I've got Eva Park, which is a generator, Generac generator, company that's coming down from St. Louis. Actually, they're going to look at the fire station generator, but I want them to look at the well over on Herald Street. Price us a generator for that and down at the wastewater plant where we'll have to have. We don't, the old generator's been in there for god ever.
What are you going to do? Are you just going to shut that off tonight when they're like close to that? Shut the left it off? On Wednesday night to.
Yeah, I need to talk to you. Yeah, they're going to be shut down for four hours tonight.
And you have to have that. Generator.
But I mean.
The only, the only thing I want to say on that is I would like to get Katie York's price in force too.
Yeah. And actually Katie York now is a Generac. Um, they can sell the generator and he certified the installment and everything. So actually, when I said that to um Keith, his name's Keith, he said, uh, we just got a new installer now. And I said, York? And he said, yes. So if if we did go this route, we could, we buy the generators and then Chris, you be a local guy, install them and put them.
Does he service them too, other than installing?
Uh, and and that's, I don't know if he services them or not. That's what we're gonna find out. But I do know the fire departments have problems with their service companies, so.
Well, I mean, it's like when the electric goes off at five, six hours.
So we do need.
I completely forgot about that because we didn't leave that connected due to the down. I did tell the boys that they needed a call in a work order to gas the sage to get that hook up like Jeremy.
Yeah, and and that's to use that generator. Uh, my company, we just left the generator here. We have it in Sutton, Newburgh. And I told, I said, just leave it here. There ain't much difference. If I needed all, you know, everybody knows where the plant's at. My company, if we need it somewhere else, they can just come down and get it. Uh, if we needed it here, that that's that's an agreement that we always had with if we left it at a system that if you needed it, you could use for for housing. So I'm just, I've already made arrangements and said, we're leaving it here. Yeah. So anyway, um, so the generator people coming Thursday, uh Van de Venner. It's our wastewater plant gurus. Um, Nick's coming. I thought he said Friday, but he's supposed, I told him to call Cory that they're gonna meet down at the plant on the rotors, on the headwork stuff and the motors and pumps in the basement. Um, cause that's, yeah, cause that was some of the stuff I was looking at on DNR stuff that we needed it fixed.
Don would come watch it?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I I told Don, he hadn't, actually had a text from back. Um, anyway. With with bugs, with the generators, the plant, I don't have a price yet from Van de Venner, won't until they come and look. The engineering for the water side. And the water tower replacement, or not replacement, actually.
Repaying?
Repaying. Um, we can all do that through uh DAX.
We have to do the engineer fee too.
Engineer fee and everything. Yeah, we can roll it in there. So.
Does the guy with Carrie, we, that's one we talked about earlier?
He was here before, um.
There's two of us.
Yeah, there's two of them. There's Brock and there's there's Steve. So I talked to Charlie about two weeks ago. Charlie's the president of the company. He said, you're off stage. So. We can, we can wrap all of that together and do that. Um, there is one more thing. I did get a bid from uh Bailey, uh.
President.
The contractor, um, and he just give us a rough. He said, whatever kind of work that you guys wanted to do anywhere. I I had him look at Tenth Street from Highway seventeen all the way down to Center Street to replace that new line through there. And he just, he just told me, he said, we'll do all the work for you guys for eighty eighty-five dollars a foot. So.
He said he knew that kind of job or he knew that stuff.
He knew that. So roughly, um, and that's four hundred and twenty feet. Tenth Street is forty-two hundred dollars or forty-two thousand dollars. And um we supplied majority of the materials, which we can buy cheaper than he can, and we get a ten percent increase on that. Kinda high, a little high. But I'm just saying we could wrap all of that together in one. We can do that. So just an option. So some of this stuff's gonna have to be done.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just saying there's an avenue now on the water tower that we're gonna have to fix. So.
The the bug guy. How long are we gonna have to have DNR?
You can go ahead and talk about it, Jim, if you want.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. How long does he propose that he's here with his bugs?
Well, you explained that because people thought.
Well, what what do you?
DNR is gonna sign off. So we can make a decision on the UV as long as it's gonna happen.
And and that deal is, DNR don't care how we go about it. We just gotta meet numbers all all year round.
So we're gonna do it for a year?
Yeah, a year. And we got till twenty-seven.
Yes, twenty twenty-seven.
So we, if we start it now, we have a year from now of every month's of of readings and testing. So we have over a year to show them and and he guarantees that we could make our, make the numbers.
And then we wouldn't have to pay the expensive stuff for that.
Right. We'll be, we'll be making our numbers, doing the same thing as we would putting seven hundred thousand dollars in a UV equipment.
Well, plus paying all the electric that Don.
And all the electric amongst. Cause there's twenty, I think there's twenty-one sets of bulbs in that. So.
Well, we have to do electrical upgrades for that too.
And we would have.
And he said it raised theirs by a bit.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, that's what he said.
And that's why he said what saved them is because they have to run them. So they don't have to charge themselves that much, you know? We're not that away. So twenty-one sets of lights, man, that's gonna be and UV lights, that's gonna be a lot, just in the lighting cycle. That's not putting it all in.
Would you explain to them kinda what?
The bugs? We did this um a year ago, two years ago?
No, in twenty twenty-two, no, twenty twenty-one.
It was twenty-one.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's five years.
This, what it is, is heartland environment that, and I'll tell you kinda what it is. They they come to us, they're actually lagoon people, and they clean up lagoons, they clean up the the sediment and aisle products in lagoons. Okay? He come to me, I've known him for quite a while, and he said, I'd like to do a mechanical plant. That's what we have, is a mechanical sewer plant. Y'all don't see it. It's way down on the other side of town. You may have seen it. And we've got an oxidation ditch. So everything from town goes down there and we process it and treat it. Then, once it's all processed and treated, it goes out into the creek that goes into the tavern creek. So we have to meet ammonia levels, we have to meet E. coli levels. And there's one month a year in every system in the state that we don't meet E. coli levels. So we have to do something now with the new ruling, EPA's come down with the new ruling of uh ammonia levels and E. coli levels that are all decreasing. So we have to do something with our plant. And that was part of all having all the engineer and everything down here to take care of all of that, the upgrades at the plant. The bug people, which they have. He said they work with Missouri State. Isn't that what he said?
Yeah.
SMSU or Missouri State.
M S D.
And they actually house their bugs. But they generate bugs. What these bugs do is eat the solids in the wastewater. So you can imagine what kinda solids we get coming through our sewer system. These bugs eat that and they live on it. So they grow colonies in our wastewater system. And um he can generate different bugs, one to eat ammonia, one to eat E. coli and get our, get numbers down where we can stay way below where we're gonna have to be anyway. So and it's quite a bit cheaper than the seven hundred thousand that we'll have to put in for a UV. And the UV is just, that number is just putting the building and the lights and everything in there. And uh it's not meeting the electric or anything like that. So this here, quite a bit cheaper. And he guarantees it. He said if it doesn't work, which in twenty-one, he come in and he set um trailers up at different lift stations through town, one behind his house. And uh we met our numbers within three weeks. So. He guarantees it here. He said if we, for some reason, we didn't meet the number, we wouldn't pay for it. So.
So though that proposal, he said, that total dollar, is that a monthly, a quarterly? That's what I was trying to get out of the ninety-three.
That, he said that that would be quarterly. Uh, the the bucket runs like eighty some days.
Costs would be quarter.
Quarter. Did you get that?
Yeah, I put there.
Did you look at it? Oh, you got it.
It's attached to your report though.
Why don't you just talk about it?
What question was that? Now, you said with the E. coli, there's one month that nobody basically.
That's your line. August time.
July, August, that's what I figured.
Yeah.
Now, do you notify people that are along that creek? That, like, does that cold E. coli, is that affecting that creek?
Not really. Doesn't. It's just the numbers, the high, the higher level going out. Um, that, the water's still treated. It still meets EPA's MCLs, but it's just the higher level. Yeah.
The animals.
Yeah, understandable. Yeah. And and that creek is is a little different. That creek there is, it it a DNA classified, or DNR classifies it as a non-contact string. So if it was like the tavern itself, where you've got a bigger body, that's a contact string, where actually somebody could get it. Yeah, yeah.
So, okay.
So our levels just get higher?
Yeah, I wanted.
I I say we don't meet the levels. They just.
The dogs go in there.
Yep.
And come back to the house. That's.
Well, then he said that this system or whatever this is here is gonna take the sludge.
Yep, the sludge will be gone or won't be gone because they have to manage that because we still have to meet a removal at the plant. So when he puts this out here, he can't remove it all out here because we gotta meet a re- removal requirement at the plant. So, I mean, it's, you know, it'll have to be tweaked a little bit here and there, but um.
What is the percentage removal right now?
Yeah, you know, at the plant, I don't know what ours is right off the bat. I'd have to look at our permit. I don't know. It is pretty low. I don't know, like I said, I don't probably, I just have to look at the permit and say, I don't know. Um, I don't know if Don could tell us, Dak could tell us with.
He could probably tell you right offhand, but.
He could tell you what his is. And and I will tell you his plants in Richland and our plant at Crocker, our sister plant. They was built about the same time or the same thing. So. And he put UV in his and he said he wished he never done it. So. Um, anyway, that's some ideas there, something that we're really gonna have to think about because um these two things have to be done. This has to be done um at the plant. So.
I just want clarification on what the numbers are.
I think that some of this is gonna depend on, cause I remember he said he doesn't know how much will end up being pushed through. So like we could be changing, you know, it's depending upon how much we push through. It's also dependent upon if we add this on every lift station or if we just do like the main one.
And and he's, there are seven lift stations and he said we wouldn't make three.
Yeah, that's what he said.
But still, the question is.
I know the cost for the pumps and the aeration would be, that's a one-time cost and upfront.
Yeah, and I think that's what this is versus a quarterly.
That's what we need to know. We can't make an educated decision if you don't know what your annual or quarterly cost.
And really, I'm not asking for a decision tonight.
Oh.
I'm just, I'm just saying we need.
I just wanted to present it to you.
We've gotta present this because we've gotta do something, something.
Well, he said, what's that, what was that thing that the staff?
Well, he did say it was gonna suck, correct?
Yeah, he got, he said that he would get us on our rotation, but he.
Yeah, he's gonna have one then on each.
Like two weeks or something, an hour or something. So so we got a while, but we can clarify this with BJ or Bo either one.
Yeah.
Bo is the only. BJ.
BJ is who said this.
BJ's, he's, he's his right-hand man and he, I mean, but anyway. Uh, we, we, I I know he said the tubs would last like eighty some days, ninety days. So every ninety days or quarterly, we would have to buy the tubs.
Yeah, and and understandable. I I just feel like they should be able to narrow it down a little more.
And and we can do that.
I think we, I think it would behoove us to wait till after we get started to see where our numbers are and then say, we think, you know, maintenance-wise, it's gonna cost you
Well.
X amount.
Dog's coming, Dog's coming down Friday. They're setting, actually with the stuff that we purchased that we should have had years ago at the lab. We purchased new stuff at the lab for our testing. They're actually, um, he's coming down Friday at noon or whatever. Uh, yep, and Dalton and Jeff's gonna be there and they're gonna go through all the lab stuff and he's gonna show them what test needs to be run to do the test. So that's part of it. So we have to know our numbers. Don's been doing it. So he's got uh three months of numbers on Richland.
Since July.
So he knows where, I can where we're at.
He said we're, we're doing good.
And that's what he said.
Yeah.
So. And like I said, he, he said he wished he would have done this or they would have done this for us. So. Yeah. Just here's an avenue that we pray for to still meet with in our realm of everything. Um, the bugs, the tower, um. The other thing, uh, a couple of things. Jessica, if you will, uh, West School Street. And I need to get with Andy on this too. Um, Andy Helms with the county. Uh, there's gonna be a new housing, uh, new house put in there and some development right around the corner.
They're putting a modular home in there and I just spoke with him, won't be, not to cut you off.
Yeah.
But they're supposed to, um, the company that they're purchasing, purchasing modular home through we're supposed to fill that permit out and get it back to me. And I have heard in more.
Is that right?
West School Street is Vern's, Vern's. Okay. And it's been a mess for a long time. You know, I've I've bladed it, but there's only so much we can do.
Yeah.
Um, I did ask Andy here a while back if we could jointly fix that. He needs to fix some of his right there at that curve.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, that's where county starts and we we start. So right in there. But we need to bring water all the way down that side, all the way down, hence where that trailer is and right there where the high lines are.
Yeah.
We need to bring water down there. So we could supply water to that land that's there. The sewer's gonna be different. They'll have to put grinder pumps like some of the others. Cause we can't have the lift station anywhere through there.
So aren't they, that five acres, aren't, aren't the boys gonna pull off of that line for water for them as well?
Yes.
That's my thought.
Yeah. So what we need to do, um here in the next couple of days, we will do um a dig right so they can call, um come in and mark your utilities. Cause I do know Windstream has a fiber line down the middle of the road.
How do you know that, Jim?
Well, I get it with a rubber.
And they.
How deep?
About two inches. So uh, we do need to call them. When we need to call Windstream directly and say, look, we're gonna reclaim this road again. We're gonna widen it back out. And your fiber line is broken.
I have a direct number.
Okay. Because they need to move it over to where the electric pumps are. Or.
Well, that's all you gotta do. You just gotta call and say you wanna relocate. And they'll.
Why would they go down that road anyway?
Is that right? It's that easy.
It's that easy.
That they run it right through a culvert.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, Jeff pulled that culvert up. Was gonna replace it. Picked it up and went, what is that? It was a fiber line that they ran right through the pole.
Nice.
Yeah. So anyway, we need to do that. Reason by, reason being, if you haven't been down West School Street lately, it's a mess. It's always been a mess. So we need to fix.
Well, that's just a.
And if we're gonna cut and put this water line in down through there, it's the time to do it.
Yeah.
So, um.
Rough area.
And that's what I was gonna get with Andy to see, and we talked about it before. He wants to bring, what's the name of that road coming off?
Bison or.
Bison is way down. Yeah.
The one that cuts through and comes back up to West School Street.
No, it's blue.
Blue.
Blue road.
Oh, I don't know. I, that's what I was asking.
Off seventeen, and then it's cool and blue.
Okay. Well, I did talk to Andy before, and, you know, our, our road grader's not very good, you know. You know, what we got. If we supply the gravel and stuff like that in the culverts, because we are gonna have to put one there at Vern's. Uh, it's, it's jumping, and down on the road just before the curve.
Yeah.
We need to re-put that culvert.
It's been a need to done.
It's gotta be done. Um, so.
There was out all the time. I know who was.
Yeah, it's just.
Yeah, that's basically what it was for years.
I'm gonna get down with Andy and kinda get over there and see what, if, if they can put gravel in their side and we have gravel trucked in, if maybe their grader can just come on through.
Pulling the bitches up and all that stuff.
That's why I wanted to keep the water line. We gotta run it off to the side and, uh, Kinsley's old house. Who lives there now?
Who lives there?
Do you know?
Is that the one that's still in that corner right there?
No, no. This is the one that, uh, Kinsley lived there on York Street.
Where have they lived there, women?
On the corner?
No, no, not on the corner.
Brit's old place?
Huh?
Brit Kinsley's old place?
Brit, yeah, yeah.
Brit.
Brit, yeah.
Oh, it's semi from out of town bought it.
Yeah.
Okay. There's some trees in there too. That's right on, I mean, on the roof.
Really?
Yeah, yeah. Like I said, if you hadn't looked at it, like, we can go by there and look at it. We need to get those trees out of there.
We have bad those. Throw in our roadways.
Yeah, but, and they are. The fence is over here, and that's why we got them trees out. We can put a ditch down through there and put that water line right on that ditch road.
We're in a place to.
It is. I'd say fences, you see bob wire here and there.
Yeah.
But that's where I'd like to get with the homeowner and say, hey, you know, we want, we're gonna try to stay on our.
They should have utilities in there. We should be able to figure out.
And, and they do.
They do, and they're nice.
Because Kinsley's, uh, water meter is right there on the corner. Vern's over here. There's a fire hydrant right here, and their tap is here, and it runs across this road.
Crosses the road.
Yeah, already crosses. And that's what I'm saying. We've already got.
The wood tap that part.
Yes, yes. We've already got the easel and everything to their meter. So we just need to go down the side of the road with water line all the way down to the corner. So. Uh, just something that's gonna be in the works, something we're gonna have to do. So just letting y'all know that and we'll probably have that road pour up for a while. So.
We're getting done. Vern made more.
Well, but she's gonna have a better driveway and a better hill that, right after Vern, that hill.
Yeah.
You can't even keep gravel on, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
But I'm not, I'm not giving Andy and see, we can fix, jointly fix that, so. Uh. All right. That was number eight on my list. Number nine was the, you sent a picture or sent something about a bucket truck. What? What was that?
Uh, that was, uh, Chris Hilton had it for sale. Uh, the boys are just always saying that they would like a bucket truck to be able to turn trees and this, that, and other, and it was really, really cheap.
They're doing it out front of the back.
What are they doing?
Pull saw instead. Pull saw's about twenty feet long. But anyway.
A lot cheaper than a bucket truck.
Yeah. Uh, the other thing I wanna bring up, and PD had one, they sold it, I guess, but a box truck. Reason being, I've got prices coming. Got prices coming for, uh, road blockets or their blockades, if that's what you wanna call them. Um, different, different ones, ones that we put together and ones that are solid metal. So I'm getting prices of them. Uh, getting enough to do all, was it six streets? Two in each one. Um, Heath Road, Level Street, Tenth Street, Ninth Street, College Street, and.
A church.
A church. So I need more than that.
Yeah.
Okay. But anyway, getting some prices, um, for that. Uh, what I'd like to do, if we'd had, had a trailer, keep all of this road blocking stuff and the lights and everything, cones and everything in the trailer. The boys can use it if they have to block a road off with membrane or something, PD, or if we need to do something for railroad days, we have it all in the trailer.
Yes.
Um, so, um, getting some prices on that twelve foot. I think twelve foot would be big enough. This, usually the blockades.
Street or something.
Yeah, usually the blockades. Uh, what I've seen so far is eight or ten feet. So. So.
Yeah.
Get some prices on that. And that is all I got. Any questions? All right. I'm done. Well, Sheriff already left, so. Well, we'll skip him and go on then. Code enforcement.
I think a week before last, I went and had a talk with, uh, Zach Arfield about the fines for our nuisance violators. Yeah, their fine is fifty dollars and court costs. Hundred bucks. It's never gonna be any more than that. Um, he said, uh.
And that's the prosecutor?
That's the prosecutor, city prosecutor. Yeah. There's never gonna be more than that, no matter how many offenses we hit them with. Um.
Because of the ordinance though.
Because of the ordinance. Uh, he said the next step, the next best thing would be, see if we could get them under the peace disturbance, uh, law, be classified as a misdemeanor, if we can get them for the like, a noxious odor or something like that. Uh, there's not really anything in peace disturbance as far as like visually, it's gotta be a smell. I want right now that I'm looking at that has a smell. It's, but it's not any of them that I have been. This one's a new one. Two oh one Church Street, they cleaned up, we were complaining, what, they, they cleaned up the area without even having that, any further interaction might be. I just went by one day, trucking gone, everything was cut down. But our, our three biggest headaches are, well, two biggest headaches are gonna remain headaches until we figure something else out. Uh, one, one sixteen Herald Street, and I finally found out going through information I got from Jessica, found out who the executor is, and I managed to track down an address. I sent the executor, uh, a letter saying, hey, the property needs to be cleaned up, because that one's probably the worst one I doubt right now, other than one of the pockets that I can't find any living relative to that can make a decision on. Um. Yeah. Had an animal control issue, Mr. McGowan, with his new house down on, at the end of Hawkins Street, was complaining about the people from Hill Street, there are hogs coming out and tearing up his new grass. Well, I went and looked at it, it's not hog tracks, I'm seeing, I'm seeing deer tracks. Deer tracks on his property. I did speak with the folks on Hill Street. They know that the hog's managing to get out of their pen and wander around. Uh, they're in the process, they were in the process as of last week of building a new pit further away from everything. Uh, I, I believe these folks are taking care of the problem. Like I said, numerous times I've gone around the corner down there and there've been four or five deer standing there. More inclined to believe it's deer tearing up his grass than it is hogs.
Armadillos are shooting back right now too.
What's that?
Armadillos.
Oh, yeah. No, I haven't seen any other ones that shoot. I don't like armadillos. There's one animal I do not like. Uh. Also started working on a burn ordinance. I came into work one Monday, uh, what, about two weeks ago? About two weeks ago, I got a complaint from Jessica, I complained from several other people, couple messages on my phone about so many burning trash over the weekend. Um, we don't have a burn ordinance as far as stuff like that. I wrote up one for, uh, I wrote up a new, uh, proposal to differentiate between yard waste and trash. Everybody's got trash service here in town. There's really no reason anybody should be burning trash. But I put in there that if they've gotta burn trash, they should be using a burn barrel, not just burning it all throughout, right? Yard waste is yard waste, you burn, burn waste, but trash, and then I also put in there a long list of things that should not be burned per the EPA, because they are petroleum-based. And there's also like animal waste and human waste, animal remains. Oh, I'll list the stuff that I put in there. Other than that.
And that's it right here? What have you done?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's your big guy. We have it in there, yes.
If everybody would take that home and read it, go for it, and of course we'll have to send it to Mark. Any changes to it? Mark it up.
I think, I think we need to get away from, uh, put in there somewhere.
What's that?
Where we can't burn it in the ditches.
Oh, yeah, that is put in there too. Also, I put in, um, that if you're gonna burn, city's never gonna tell you no unless it's unsafe, but you still need to notify the city prior to burn. Regardless of whether it's a yard waste burn or a trash burn, you can come up and notify the city or the coast, the chief of police, that, that you're gonna be doing a burn.
Not, we don't want burning it.
Because half of it will burn and the other half will sit there in the culvert, and then you're wondering why water's running over the road?
What if you do that?
The life of that happening is, well, hard to wait.
Well, you do, but that, you're, you're probably.
One out of sixteen.
What's that?
I said one out of sixteen.
Yeah. Um, one of them that was burning that weekend, I went by to tell them it'll be burning trash, and well, can't tell them not to burn trash, but it looks like they had been burning in the ditch, and there were several aerosol cans. It had been part of their burn. Yeah, that's a nice little bomb like that.
Yeah.
Let me classic and aerosol cans at the same time, when it gets plugged, you're gonna get hot, melted black, or plastic all over somebody.
All right. Anybody got any questions? Have you got anything else? I see your barricade is on here too, so, sorry. I took your thunder there.
I, I like, you told me, you told me last time to talk to them about, uh, Park City.
Yeah.
He had the best price he got on Spice, what I was looking at.
Yeah.
I think I got.
And I gave him another company today to go through, so we'll see.
Going through, uh, traffic, traffic safety warehouse.
Yeah.
That eighty bucks a pop.
Yeah. Now, was it the put-together ones?
That's the ones we put together.
Yeah.
They come in three pieces of board and then two stands.
Yeah.
Eight foot.
Were they plastic?
Yeah.
Hard, hard?
Final.
Final, yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's, uh, I had, there's twenty-four of them for shipping and everything, twenty-two ninety-two.
Yeah. Well, he's supposed to get a price from some other companies that are giving, and then we'll go through it and see what we can come up with.
So of course they got the traffic warehouse, uh, traffic safety warehouse. They said that price is good, they'll point it at, so. I don't know if it changed.
Okay. Probably won't change that much.
Yeah.
Anyway. Anything for him?
No.
All right. Thanks, sir. All right, Jessica, you're up. Did, uh, Sheriff Lee, can you see him out there?
Okay.
Okay.
You're up anyway.
Yeah.
Oh, um, before I get to that one, um, I just wanna let you know, um, I'm gonna give a refund to Kate Moore, um, over the pavilion this weekend. I don't know who done it. I don't care who done it. Um, but they did it. Somebody unlocked the pavilion bathrooms while the soccer tournament was going on, and she had the pavilion rented for a private party, so they got to walk into messes and trash everywhere. Um, I didn't know that they were having, um, the second set. I don't know. So it was open, and she showed up and there was trash everywhere, the, and while her party was going on, people from the public, even though the pool was open, was going in and out of there. So I'm like, absolutely not, like, I would be ten ways a tick, so I'm gonna give her thirty-five dollars back. Um, just wanna, just wanna throw that out there.
Just, I will say something. I think there's a key out there.
I think there is, and I don't know who has it.
I, because when we did something for the Saddle Club, we, when we had the, uh, houses out there, we never opened those bathrooms up, and they were open and by the end of the night. So there's gotta be a key out there somewhere.
Yeah, we're just gonna have to change.
When can we get the doors buttoned?
I know we got our frames too.
Yeah, it's, it's the whole setup like we had here.
You said, hey, kids?
No, they're down there in the storage room.
Give me them keys back. I'll go by there and all look and see. I'm glad to be able to get my guys over there, like.
Um, I just don't think happens right, that, you know, the cage they have in.
Yeah.
Then they have, you know, and Jimmy had come up and got the key the day before, you know, and I said, just make sure everything's good, and he's, you know, come back up and said it was, and it just, uh.
Not a problem.
Not a.
They have that. And we'll have, we've got the new doors down there. So we'll put digital locks or something on them.
Well, and I, I wanna, I should go back. I didn't know we were having two sets of tournaments when she, um, scheduled, you know, that. Otherwise I would have been able to say, hey, there's gonna be soccer tournament this time, blah, blah, blah. But regardless, they shouldn't have been open.
Yeah, but, but the pool was open.
Yeah. Uh, and there's plenty of stalls in there, so it's not like it's a, you know, one stall bathroom.
Did you guys have a concession stand? I know that's not real.
Uh, they did, yeah. Um. So we had, um, an issue with, um, some of our, uh, meters. They are not programmed correctly. Corey did fix, uh, rail pound rooms today. It was reading to the nearest tenth instead of the nearest hundred. Um, so I'm gonna have them look at, um, Sam's again.
It probably is.
I, it probably isn't, but I went ahead and emailed Caleb, the request him to come down here.
Okay, you did that. I don't have to call.
No, no, I emailed him, um, to come down and, and look at the meters and then sit with Carol again as far as the new metering system goes.
But did he respond to you?
I have, I did not email him until later today, and I've been going, nothing, yes.
Okay. Let me know if he doesn't tomorrow.
I will. Um, all of, I'm just going down my list, so if you have a question, just pop in here. Um, all of our privacy fees for, uh, DNR have been billed um, for twenty twenty-five, so no more access fees will be on your bills. Um, we are still waiting the subs two point O upgrade.
Yeah, I did talk to her, and she's moved, moved us up, she said.
Uh, we had twenty-one shut off, on our shut off list this past month. It was one of the biggest ones we've had in a very hot minute. Um. We lost an employee last week in the office. Um, I have submitted a points policy in, in your packet, um, to hopefully enact for our employees um, as disciplinary act to them.
Need backup to your shut off list?
Yeah.
Number four, so it's supposed to be all. Does that mean they currently don't have water there?
What is that?
Item number four on the shut off list.
They did not currently have water, no, because they.
It's been off since the sixth?
They, they come, okay, so no, this is the list that was generated, the sixth, that morning. Um. They came in and paid a couple of days afterwards. They're back.
So they have water, okay. The way that reads is they didn't.
Um, don't, they didn't at the time.
Okay.
Um, don't quote me on this, but I believe everybody is back on.
Including number eight?
She's still off.
Is that a, a bad meter read, or what's the?
No, that is a, um, several months of battling the homeowner to get them in there to fix the leak, and we were being like working a payment plan, but I cut it off, and I'm like, we're not doing this anymore. This is ridiculous. You're done.
It's a renter.
It's a renter. Um. It's a renter. Um, we did end up talking to the homeowner, um, and he said that he would get in there and get it fixed, so. And I told her, if you get a plumber in there and fix it and show us, say, fix it, I'll give you a leak adjustment. There's no need in paying all this money, but I can't let you continue to rack a bill up like that.
Yeah, that's kinda, that's, that's a lot.
Yes. Um, and we did, you know, process of elimination on, the boys have went out there several times, done meter profiles, made sure the meter wasn't spinning and it's, it's an issue on the end. Um, allegedly it's being taken care of. Um, as of last weekend, we don't have any more, um, con- uh, concessions for soccer, so our.
Soccer's over.
Soccer's over, so we should be stagnant on our parks employees until next season.
When are they winterizing the pool?
We have to schedule that. We have to schedule that.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm not talking about generally, I'm talking about the song.
I haven't heard. I ha- I haven't heard. Um, I have it on my list that this week I need to come up with, um. Obviously, we're still seeking a public works director position. Um, uh, I have our closed out first quarter, um, financials attached to this, um, packet. Our draft for our twenty twenty-four is completed for our audit. However, um, it was mailed to me. Um, and I need to email him to get a hard, like an electronic copy of it because I tried to scan it in and it's way too big for some reason to email you guys for your review, um, before we sign it and, you know, sign, sell, deliver kind of thing. Um, we did get the account set up at the CASI for the new, um, testing for Dalton for the wastewater treatment. Um, that's the place that Dawn recommended we start using. Um, and as Jim said, the water tower was washed. Um, we still have some work orders that are still hanging out there. Um, and then obviously we got the Heartland Environment, which is the bug.
Did we hear a stop sign put back up?
No, it's gone.
Okay, they still have post and new stop signs.
It's gone. Uh, they went down there Friday to put it in and Corey came back up and said that it was gone. Um, my family walked night before last and there is a whole sign, a caution sign in the creek bed. So I don't know if maybe it's farther in the creek bed? Or if someone's.
Ninth Street, Cedar Street, Waller, the one that comes off of Ninth Street from Danny Jones's? Come back up?
Danny called in.
Got ran over.
Said that it was like, you know, laid down.
It's been, it's been down for two weeks.
Yeah, and I told our work order that day and nobody went over there. And then when they went over there, I believe it was Friday.
Now, when we put a work order in, are we calling them also and saying, hey, this is priority? Okay.
And it's still not fixed.
Yeah.
No, now, now the sign's completely gone, like, hole and, I'm assuming it's the pole too, because he said the, the sign was gone.
Yeah, the, the whole.
Yes, yeah. And that's what Danny said when he called in. Um, ACM came, they got all of our computers updated and installed. So now we're not operating off laptops anymore for our, um, tower. E- everybody's been updated. The only thing that we're lacking is on, um, G-Tech Fiber, we have a static IP for the, um, PD. And since they moved everything, we're waiting on them to finish their end. So everything is up and running, other than, um, Jose, I can't access Crime Star right now. We got one server up here.
Yeah, I know. I knew why we had to have static IP. Those files, but I forgot that Jose still uses.
Um, I did, um, prepare the changes for the draft of the MOU and you guys have that for review before we submit it back to the school. Um, I did, uh, contact Great Rivers Engineering, let them know that we wanted to move forward with the, uh, water system. Um, engineer study, and I haven't heard back from them, so I'll hold up with them that this week. Um, to get, I don't know if she's gonna have to generate a new contract or use the same one that we had, like, you know. And obviously we're paying outright for it and it'll be cheaper than us, you know, doing a grant or whatever. Um, I believe that whenever we got that fitted out from her, didn't she give us a hundred and twenty or a hundred and eighty day window for?
Hundred and eighty day?
Yeah.
It was one eighty.
Um.
She said she thought she could do it inside the ninety, but.
It's to be generous. Um, I do, we do have more funds coming from Railroad Days. Me and Chris will have to get together and, um, so, uh, she did her online processing for our vendors, so, um, she'll be writing us a check for that vendor fee. We haven't got that yet. Um, trick or treat is this Saturday and I do want to talk about that. I guess we're supposed to have some pretty wicked storms coming.
Yeah.
So I feel like in order to give the people who, um, said that they were coming, I think by tomorrow, I probably need to call that if we're gonna move forward. It's supposed to be like very wicked, so I'm thinking if, if you cancel it for weather, then possibly, I know Chrissy has mentioned several times to do a trick or treat on Main Street, which Halloween is Friday night. I think that I could extend that to them and say, hey, if you want to set up along our sidewalk out here, um, I'm planning to be up here to hand candy out, so I think we could, you know, offer something. Um, but just let you know it's coming down.
I think that's, I just do there.
With saying that, we need to set trick or treating hours. I don't know what you guys were thinking about Halloween.
What night is it?
It's all Friday, huh?
Now, don't you be pulling in your fireworks stuff till one o'clock in the morning nonsense.
Hey, kids need to have fun. We need to get back to getting the kids in the streets and off the video games.
I agree with Ryan.
You know, I, I, I kinda like that idea with the weather gonna be like it is, just have everything uptown. They can do.
I, I would rather have done that, but I think, I think our community really likes the trick or treat thing, but I think that it would be better for, um, the city and downtown and our businesses.
I didn't ask down there if it does, right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah. I would just rather not be doing it in the rain. I mean, we're not gonna turn out and I don't want to fight no tornado while we're trying to trick or treat.
You'd be like, very powerful.
And, and that, that was the eighteenth, right?
Yeah, this Saturday. I mean, if you guys are okay with it, I'll call it and we can just move it to Halloween night and I'll send that out to the people who have.
So what kind of hours do we want to do? Halloween night.
What have we been, five to nine?
Five and nine.
Five to nine is what it.
Yeah, that's usually, I mean, that's.
That should be plenty of time to get candy.
I think that's. Actually, when you're having to stand there at the door and.
Old cat woman, come on.
Hey, Arthur, I'm Mr. Arthur.
So that might be the best thing to do this year.
Yeah.
I think it'd be a better turnout anyway.
I made a motion when we set the hours from five to eight.
Like what?
Nine. See if you guys pay attention. It is Friday night. What's going to happen?
Okay.
That's what, we can make it till eleven if Humboldt's gonna be open.
I can't sleep for Humboldt.
She usually does do bounce houses and stuff. And the last time I talked to her, she said she was doing that, but I haven't talked to her in a while regarding it. Um, she normally has bounce houses set up and has the venue open, um. I don't know, maybe, maybe we can get a food truck in here or something.
Well, that, or we can do that hot chocolate or something like that, have somebody.
Well, I wanted to do, um, hot dogs and chili and drinks, um, down at the park. So, I mean, we can still, we can still do that up here. Um, or maybe I can talk to Mr. Schrader, CFFA wants to do something in conjunction with Humboldt, you know, the box at Wayne. Oh, yeah, I can talk back to him too.
Summer Club?
Jim, I can find out Thursday. No, I.
If that's something that we can just plan for, for Halloween?
I've got stuff. I'm doing that now, but I can find out.
I'll have it a little short notice.
It is.
And we were playing, we were planning on doing hot dogs and stuff anyways. Maybe we could go through here and book us something next year.
Good.
Um.
Well, I got a motion for eight till.
Five to nine.
Five to nine, second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Well, I should. I want it till eleven, but I'll just agree with you.
We can get caught.
I'm probably gonna need to get a trailer too, yeah.
Um, so, so what about, go ahead and tr- trick or treat? As I said, it's supposed to be eighty percent chance of sale.
We can just go ahead and cancel it. I'm opposed tonight that it's canceled and I'll have the boys take the signs down. I just feel like we're just gonna be the dead.
What do you guys think? I'll just put it out there. What do you guys think?
I, I.
What's happening?
I think you give everybody notice.
Yeah.
I think.
Cause I know that.
They have a trick one up there. Um, so I think if you give everybody notice ahead of time, with several days, like you're.
Right, that's what I'm saying. I don't want to wait till Friday.
Waiting till the last time.
So if we plan something pretty good for Halloween night, I think that might help.
I think, Pat, if you just want to bank on the city doing the food this year, maybe, maybe we'll see how it goes. And if we get, you know, feedback that we like it, maybe we can reach out to an organization to do something.
So you need hot dog cookers then, huh?
Viewers at home say yes.
Do viewers say yes?
I mean.
Okay, good. I'm, I'm glad we have it.
Okay, well, I'll get that posted on, on the page, the city's page tonight and we'll start pushing it out, but.
Well, let's plan something big for Halloween night.
Um, I think the last little bit of stuff that I have. Um, uh, BJ and Tracy with Metal Construction bought the, um, the, uh, remaining items that was in the Snapchat from baseball, so it don't sit there and rot. Um, and they used some of it at the school for, um, the, um, faith that the field or whatever they done last week. And then I believe she said the, the remainder of it that they didn't use, they dominated to FFA, so. Um, so that's not sitting in there going to waste. And we are still awaiting on the funds transfer from the baseball and, um, softball, um, park board.
None of those.
Extracting, no, we have not got that.
I know, park, park board won't be done until, we can't do it until the very end of the year because of the tax.
That's not what the tax lady told us.
No, as long as everything was zeroed out.
She said it's done and it can be done anytime.
Okay, I'll get it. I'll get with Kelly and Jackie.
Yeah, as long as all of the expenses and stuff was paid, that way she could zero it out, then, then they could release it. So, um, but there was, uh, me and Tracy brought in, she, uh, brought a three hundred dollar check today for the concession item, so I'll deposit that in there. Yeah, and then, um, they, I had let the, them charge, talk two times to our account, so we're gonna do a, a transfer of funds for that, um, back to the general fund, so. Um, but other than that, I don't think we'll have anything unless you guys have it on for me.
You had on your working program. That one I asked you about? Leslie supposedly working.
Real good time. Then you sent out the thing for the nurse who's still early.
I did. Um, I've been soliciting pretty heavily and hard on brochure.
I think the one like you held.
I emailed them on Friday.
Every, every hour.
Get old.
Hold your blind.
Did you not get all the votes on the signs yet?
I did not. Uh, Christie gave me hers. Um, did you send?
I think.
Did you email it back to me?
What?
Okay, I'm working up here and back here and stuff isn't sinking all the way, so.
What are we talking about?
So the, um, Kate had done, took the signs down at the, the, in the town and we had a fundraiser and we had businesses donate to it and we got the mockups and I emailed them to you and there's two options. Um, yeah, they are pretty nice.
Okay, there you go.
So just check that and get back to me so I can, uh.
Send an email.
Maybe you did. Yeah. Uh, yeah. J. Patton, J. Patton at cityaccompany. Um. Maybe.
Mr. Mayor.
Those emails to your regular.
Yeah, I need to take where it was, go right to it.
Um.
Yeah, look at there. Holy crap, that's a great.
Holy crap, he's probably got like a thousand emails.
Oh, man.
So, uh, you're working on the main street, Christmas on Main Street.
Yes, uh, Christmas on Main Street will be the first Saturday of December. Um, and it is, it's called Grinchmas on Main Street. We will have Santa Claus, but it's gonna be Grinchmas. We're gonna do a holiday cheermeister award for businesses and individuals. So we're gonna, that, I'm, hopefully I'll finalize stuff this week and I'll start releasing information on it. Um, but it'll be a good time. It'll be a good fun.
Okay.
So this point system policy, is this in addition to our current?
Yes. I have no way of holding anybody accountable for anything other than, hey, you need to do this and then bring it in here. So I think, and I'm gonna be real honest, I talked to our employees about this and everyone likes it.
Where did you get this from?
There is a redeem, I wrote it. Um, there is a redeeming option, um, like if you don't accumulate any within a certain amount of time, then so many points fall off, or, you know, if they don't have any points accumulated within a certain amount of time, we, um, uh, award them, you know, day off, half day off, whatever you think is necessary.
Do we have to adopt that as an amendment to the current employee handbook?
Yep. And if you would rather me update the whole policy and bring it in here and we revamp that at one time, we can do that.
Yeah, it's the same thing.
That's the one I picked.
That's what I did. Oh, you got, just another one?
Oh, you gotta choose between.
That's the one I picked.
I think that one's.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That one, okay, okay. Paul text her.
Did you show everybody?
Uh, I showed all the council. I didn't want to do a, a outburst of it until it was done.
Yeah, let them get them ordered and installed, you know.
Surprise. That was pretty cool. Yeah, I like that.
Yeah, I think it, I think it's good looking.
Mm-hmm.
Who designed that?
Uh.
Oh, right here.
I can't remember what it's called. I would.
Invasion. Yeah, I like that.
You pretty well have all of that stuff, isn't it?
So I'm just gonna, why point system?
Um, I researched a little bit and, um, on an HR standpoint, there are quite a few companies that use that. Um, and if you have other ideas, I mean, um, I, like I said, I just don't have any way to hold anybody accountable and I feel like having a point system will allow us to have a paper trail if, you know, somebody's not coming into work in, in, you know, let's say their safety gear, like, that's inevitably a liability on our part if something was happening to them. You know what I mean?
Isn't that where counseling state comes in a little?
It is. Just an idea.
I have some ideas.
Well, everybody, well, write it down. Go through it, see what, see what you look like and know. All right, what else you got here, dear?
Uh, as soon as I get that, that, um, electronic copy of our audit, I will forward that out to you guys. That way you can.
It may be, well, you'll have to probably open it up on computer at all, period. They won't. Probably open up the, you know.
Maybe not.
It may, maybe something you can, have to put on Flash Drive or something.
Maybe.
Google Drive.
Our Google Drive, yeah.
We've got to pass Flash Drive, yeah. Go to drive.
It's the twenty-first century.
Brian, Brian, you want a fluffy dish?
Do they even make those anymore?
Reassure the government.
Uh, on a side note, the soccer field looks really good.
Yes, it does.
Going in well.
Very, very good.
Did they reseed it?
I was gonna say, aren't they reseeding it a second time?
We are going to reseed it and winter purloined.
Did he mow it?
Yeah, he did.
Nope. I'm gonna move that. He bit. Jessica?
What?
Did that young man mow that field?
No, not ours.
Who?
They're better not than anybody.
Looked like there was somebody, looked like tracks on it.
That may be from pulling that sprinkler. You can't pull that sprinkler by hand.
Oh.
That's three hundred foot of hole.
I was up there today and set.
You can't drag.
I set the barricades back up and was looking down through there and it looked like somebody went down through there.
Yeah.
You can always see it.
I don't want to see it publicly, but.
The grass on it.
Been using that to pull it.
So, and that's probably what it was. It looked like, looked like a mower to me, then I got to look and I'm going, hey, it been mowed and.
I was gonna say.
Then it looked like over here it had been mowed and I thought, oh, okay.
No, it came in real.
Now, I mowed around the side and up behind the firehouse fence and the hillside and all of that.
I, I know.
I mowed on that.
That just triggered a thought you was talking about Bailey. Did he get you a prize for smoothing that out that we talked about down there where we want to extend him? That just triggered a thought you was talking about Bailey. Did he get you a prize for smoothing that out that we talked about down there where we want to extend them lower?
No, he had it.
We need to ask him about putting that um.
Now's the time to do it.
Those poles in there by that field off of what's already put up top.
From the fire department fence down.
Yeah.
Like I said, I want to leave a space there.
Yeah.
Uh, big enough where we can get an ambulance or something in there where if they have to get on the field, they can. So.
How, did you get numbers back from concrete?
No, because I. Um, I'm gonna get ahold of Dawn for the styrofoam.
Oh, yeah.
Forms that go up against the pool and see what that cost is on that.
Okay.
Can imagine.
The pool.
I can imagine this work.
I don't think it'll be that bad. I mean, they're not gonna be cheap, but, um. The other thing I was gonna say, the new road we built in there, we're just gonna do an easement to the city, I think is.
Oh, from seventeen, yeah, yeah, yeah. That'd be fun. Now, that parking area up there, is our plans down the road is to gravel that?
I, I don't see why not. If it's gonna be a parking lot, it needs to be gravelled.
Yeah.
And sprayed and kept maintained.
That's, that's ours. That's, that.
Yes, yeah, I built that road to that extension.
Yeah, that, that whole lot up there, that's what I'm saying. We probably, if we can get.
Well, cause.
That little soccer field pushed and leveled and, and we've got dirt down here.
Yeah.
Create a soccer parking issue, especially a tournament.
It will. Then if we can get gravel up in there and get, get that all leveled out.
Yeah.
We can probably do that. Get somebody good on a road grader.
He'd love running that old.
He'd love that old one.
I think that's why he came tonight. He wants to volunteer.
That's not what his body might.
So soccer is over, so if we could start.
Is that why you're giving the job?
Don't leave, I need to talk. So soccer's over, so we could move those nets. Next, we could get the grader up there, start leveling some of that and they can come in and.
Yeah.
Put dirt in there and whatever, whatever else we need to do.
Would be the time to do it. Now, if you have some grass growing in it, or at least get it growing in the spring.
And there is some spots on that field that I noticed that we, we need, we need to just put dirt.
The lower fields? Oh, yeah, definitely. Yeah, there's low spots on it, fair spots.
Speaking of the park, did you hear any more from them to come and fix that lift station?
Yeah, they're coming.
Okay.
They're coming to St. Roberts.
Okay.
So we're not gonna get charged.
Twice.
We wouldn't get charged anyway. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They're, they're gonna, it's under warranty, but they're coming to St. Roberts to do two or three over here.
Okay.
And then he said, we'll just come over there and fix it.
Okay.
So, that, the young boy that did.
Mm-hmm.
He, that's the one I'm showing a picture to with. He, few choice words. I'll be there fixing.
Any, any more on getting the line scammed?
Um, actually, I did talk to Dawn after he was here, um, and he said, we use her, his camera. He's got a camera trailer.
Maybe you can train, I mean, I don't know if the boys know how to do that or not, but.
Well, one of his guys will run it. I, I wouldn't want to run something with somebody else's. That's why when we take the truck up there, one of our boys runs it. Um, and I did talk to the boys today, a while ago this afternoon. Um, they're gonna start in Errol Brumley and Tennessee. They're gonna jet that up through there, the old line.
Okay.
I think it's the old line that's giving the problems. So we're gonna jet that, make sure it's clear and then, um. Uh, then I'll have Dawn come and camera and he can camera. Yeah, we want to try to go all the way up past his house. We don't, I'd like to go, at least past seventeen. And I think some of the problem is up past his house.
Who, Brian?
Yeah.
Oh.
Well, that's the east side over there to, it, does it run over in there too, again?
It runs right through my backyard.
Okay.
Yeah, it gets across seventeen and splits. It goes, um, lived down by Delaney, what was Crawford's house. There's a manhole there. It goes up through Delaney's, through mine.
Oh, yeah.
Then it goes. And then the other one goes up, up, up the creek and back behind his house to the school. But that creek's what I guarantee that's what's getting the spread. We fixed that. I did talk to the company at our conference here two weeks ago and uh, if we get a camera, they can look at the cam, the, the film. And we, we'll look at it too. Of course, we'll see where the problem is and they come in and just fix that problem that they don't.
Will they, will they estimate it off of that camera footage?
I swear to it. Cause the camera, once we start, it starts going by feet. So we know exactly where it's at. We can track the hedge and we can mark it on the ground where we're at.
Good.
So. Yeah, that stuff, it should have been a long time ago.
Yeah.
Never did, so, anyway.
Yeah.
We got anything else for her?
No.
Is the color black for the shingles?
Yes.
It's black.
Hey, once, once that gets done, then, then I can go over and put a coat of white paint on it and then I'll put our, I'll have the boys put the signs up that are indication signs.
Where did you get them? Them socks.
I ordered them.
Okay.
Why?
I'd give that.
What?
You didn't say anything.
I was trying to surprise you.
Yeah, uh-huh. Anyway.
Yeah.
Um, anything else for Jessica? Jessica, you got anything else for us? Sheriff's already left, correct?
I believe it all or something.
Okay, I'm gonna mark him off. So, do we have anything for closed session?
Uh, yes.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. So, make a motion to adjourn this meeting and go into closed.